Waters?
Here.
Cabrin?
Here.
Reckon?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silence here, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamation, so we'll go right to the consent agenda, which is Items 2 through 10C. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a council member asks for a separate vote. If you want to speak on any item today, either on an item or under citizen concerns, please state your name and address for the record so that we can use that in case we need to get back to you. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
2 is a reading of the City Council minutes of November 20, 2017. 3 is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of November 14, 2017. 4 is a resolution certifying the tax increment financing debt for January 1, 2017, taxable valuations for 2019. 5 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Wesco Distribution for the purchase of 600 LED light fixtures.
I have a question just about 5 and 6, and I think it's Mr. Padmore down to you, maybe. And I understand that it's completely different items. It's light fixtures for the light pole or for the stoplights, different things like that versus Tyson. But is there any sense in waiting to order some of these fixtures when we do the LED program at...
I don't think so. I think they're different enough. We're engaging spectrum management in our specking out of the Tyson...
The ordering?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
6 is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Nystrom Electric to install 600 LED fixtures on city streets. 7 is annual reports. A is a resolution or a motion approving the Cone Park Design and Construction Advisory Committee annual report.
I had a few questions about that. Matt? Hey, I appreciate the report. It was good looking through it, very thorough, which I appreciate. A couple of just quick questions that I had was as far as the low-income fee structure, how do we determine that when people come and visit?
We have requirements in place that we... Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, we have requirements in place that we also use for our swimming pools. So they have paperwork, things that they need to bring to us that shows us that they qualify for the low income. We have standards that they have to meet.
Okay. I've just never knew that. I never knew.
Yeah, we're just basically adopting the same thing as what we do at our swimming pools for Cone Park.
That's worked well?
Yep.
Okay. And then the other thing was as far as the rental rate?
Yes.
How was that determined? And I guess I'm just coming from the stance of I've worked with nonprofits that try to get different space and stuff, and it just seems incredibly steep of... I mean, it just seems steep to me. And maybe you'll tell me that, no, you looked around and it's different. But you know, if I wanted to rent it for a Saturday, it's 600 bucks.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is that... What does that come with?
Those rates were previously approved by council. It's based on the market, and we are also supplying one staff member. That's going to be there at the rental the entire time. And that includes the cleanup.
Okay.
So a lot of those costs were factored in and built into the fee.
Okay. Is there a nonprofit rate?
There isn't for that. Yeah.
Just something we might want to think about.
Sure.
Going down the road. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
B is a motion approving the Parks and Skywalk System Board of Trustees annual report. C is a motion approving the Human Rights Commission annual report. 8 are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for the elderly and persons with disabilities project grant to support the cost of contract transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement bus and bus facilities project grants for one light-duty fixed route bus with surveillance system. C is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for the elderly and persons with disabilities project grant for one light-duty bus. D is a resolution authorizing the police department to execute...
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, on Item 8C, in the body of the resolution, the amount needs to be amended. The body said 62,000 versus 62,900.
Well, I'll move that amendment.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Cabrin?
Aye.
Reckon?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
We're sharing this with the county?
Yes.
You should be congratulated, gentlemen. I want to make sure the news media understands that, that once in a while we still can get together and do something together. The journal was asking for that. Here's proof that we can do it, right?
Yes, Rex Mueller, Chief Police Department. Yes, we are to mitigate the financial impact on the city. We are splitting it with the county. Of course, they have more personnel when you factor in their reserve program. But this will allow a lot of training for local agencies and our department and the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Thank Murd for helping you with it.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
9 are civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Burgie's Bar, 2014 Street, for violation of the Iowa Beer, Wine, and Liquor License. B is a resolution accepting a $500 civil penalty against Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, 4930 Sardine Road, for violation of the Iowa Beer, Wine, and Liquor Laws. C is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Bob's Water and Hole, 722 West 7, for violation of the Iowa Beer, Wine, and Liquor Laws. 10 are actions relating to properties. A is a resolution approving a release and satisfaction of the contract for sale of land for the private redevelopment with Sudo for property at 3201 Line Drive.
Amber Hegarty, Assistant City Attorney. We're not seeking an amendment, but did want to draw your attention to the release and satisfaction that was attached that we're asking to be executed. There was an incorrect legal description that has been corrected and been provided to the clerk's office. So the legal description that was provided in your homework was not correct, but has since been changed.
So you need a motion to amend?
I do not need a motion to change it because it was not in the resolution or in your C.A.
B is a resolution proposing to grant a temporary easement property at 2614 South Steel Street. The petitioner is Gary Ogden Construction. C is a resolution proposing to sell property at 1314 West Third. The petitioner is 1314 West Third LLC. Are we voting? That concludes the consent agenda?
Mayor, on Item 10A and 10C, I have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
So I'm staying on those two items?
Say that again.
10A and C.
10C.
Yes, you may use your electronic phone.
Okay.
Did it work?
Worked well.
Passes 5011 is a hearing in ordinance rezoning property the west of Glen Allen Road. The petitioner is C A B Estates LLC, and P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second. This is one of two items concerning Whispering Creek that was approved unanimously by the commission. The other item is number 12. I think you have in your minutes, it was basically we approved the petitioner's proposed aesthetically pleasing roundabout that's basically going to hold mailboxes and the like. And staff did make an alternative proposal to locate a roundabout on Glen Allen Road and did tell us about... Engineering told us about traffic issues that might arise from continued traffic into Whispering Creek in that area. But we approved it unanimously, and also Item 12 at both 6-0. And my name is Susan Stewart. I'm the Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission.
You did not approve the roundabout in the division, in the subdivision?
We did approve the petitioner's proposal, which was to include a roundabout. But it's not really a roundabout with the traffic.
No, I know.
Stuff. It's got a... The big mailbox would be on it, and it would be landscaped.
Yep.
It would provide some traffic calming features, but it's kind of right at the entrance of the... to the subdivision.
Is that going to have a drop curve type curve? Okay.
Brent Nelson, Senior Planner. Yes, it will. The improvement plans aren't complete yet or haven't been approved yet, but it is intended to have a drop curve.
Mayor, I did have a question about that. There was an indication in the RCA that said the city would be responsible for maintenance of that. I'm just curious.
That it would be... That it would not be city's responsibility. Is that correct, or am I missing something?
Um, let me see.
The applicant may want to chime in on this. It is in... It will be right-of-way, so therefore we're responsible for snow plowing, and we have some utilities through it. As I understand, the developer will use it for some private issues, which the homeowners association will take care of, such as landscaping and the mailboxes.
Yeah, I think the homeowners, it's taking care of it, right? My understanding from reading.
But we were told.
So the city doesn't have to... The city's not doing the maintenance on that?
No.
Okay.
On Solzback, 5000 South Louis Boulevard. In the center of the circle, the HOA will take care of everything. As far as the maintenance, I think they're referring to is just the snow removal or normal street maintenance, just like any other street in town.
Right. Okay.
That's our understanding. That's how it was presented to us.
Now we have it on the record so we can hold Mr. Solzback to that. Good gentleman.
Sounds good.
Did you have any other questions for me?
Oh, I had a number of them, but I didn't know if Susan was done or not.
I'm... I've got all the people that know everything with me. They can answer.
Well, then I'll fire them away.
For your questions.
I talked to Dave this morning, and there were a number of issues. I read this RCA over two or three times trying to figure it out. But the first one I had listed was the sanitary sewer. It's listed as, it says, the RCA, "The location alignment of the sanitary sewer for the development and its connection with the city's stormwater system may become a major issue with this development." But it doesn't say what the major issue is or who's paying for it.
Well, as of right now, Dave Carney, Public Works Director, there's an unused, we'll call it a dry sewer that's in the current alignment of Glen Allen. That will... That's discharge, ultimate master plan discharge was through this development. That will need to be connected. Let the last plans we have from them don't show it. We've had discussions. I think they understand they'll have to connect that sewer system. Sewer system was put in at a very significant depth, which I don't think really is necessary. So we probably have to relay a section of that sewer to bring that depth up to something that would be more of a typical nature.
But we're not approving that. We're just approving a rezoning. It's still your job to work those issues out, correct?
Yeah.
Which would not stop the rezoning.
Connecting the sanitary and the storm sewer, you caught one of my typos.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's the sanitary to the sanitary, and on the north end, it's deep, very deep.
Then I saw an issue... It appears to be an issue with the fire department. There is language in the RCA that talks about their international fire code and about the length of the cul-de-sac and having two separate access roads. Is the fire department okay with this?
I have discussed this with Mark Asa a couple of times. The length of the cul-de-sac from Glen Allen down to the end of the cul-de-sac meets the fire department's requirements. I believe it's less than 40 homes on such a cul-de-sac unless it has a second way out. It meets it. What we... The problem we have is we essentially have a cul-de-sac that runs from Whispering Creek Drive up to the north property line and then back down. It's a couple of thousand feet and about a part of 100 homes. That does not meet fire code. We need to remedy that by working with developers to get the extension to the north up to Highway 20. We didn't... You know, we were with the issue of do we say no and thereby make sure we don't have a connection in this foreseeable future? Or do we work with this and have an undesirable situation for a few months, maybe a year? We opted to go recommending approval and the connection as soon as we can, as soon as a developer comes along.
So is it up... If the developer says... The developer has to decide whether or not he's going to be... Do that? And if he doesn't do it, then?
No. We didn't think it.
But that's not this cul-de-sac. You're talking going north.
Yeah, future.
Future.
This cul-de-sac here meets fire code, although it is longer than we'd like. When you combine the dead-end portion of Glen Allen with the cul-de-sac, we got a long cul-de-sac. The issue is working with another development. We can't really lay that on John. Mr. Solzback, excuse me. We need to work with the developer to get the Glen Allen extension, which has utilities and is largely graded already. But we need to get that extension up to Highway 20.
But you already said that a second access would be required if it was more than 30 dwellings? And we're talking 40-plus here? Or is that not?
I believe the fire code requires a second access if we exceed...
First of all...
50 homes, I believe.
Is that not an issue? Well, first of all, we're already violating our own ordinance with the Glen Allen Road. You're way past 40 homes going Glen Allen Road.
Yeah.
So you already violated your own ordinances, and the fire department didn't seem to object. But otherwise, I don't know how we got here.
Okay.
I suppose it was on that...
Pete, what you need is to connect this road all the way up to Highway 20.
Yeah, on the south end, you do have...
But you're still... You have that potential. If they just run that road and don't put any side streets off and turn, you know, that come back to it, you have the same potential going forward.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager.
You have it to the south on here, too.
Yeah, as I was going to mention, we recently experienced that to the south. We had extremely long cul-de-sac coming off Whispering Creek Drive with all these additions coming to the south. If you recall, when we opened up and worked with the developer to the south for Eagle Ridge, which is the connection to Old Highway 141, at that time, we required him to make that full connection rather than doing individual cul-de-sacs. And I would foresee that we would do that on this next piece as well, that we wouldn't allow incremental development continuing north, that we would make that full connection on day one. And we did that same down on the south side.
Right.
As far as the cul-de-sac itself, if it exceeds 30 dwelling units, it violates fire code for the cul-de-sac that is in the subdivision. We got 28.
Yeah, I'm just interested in making sure that all the code is met.
That northerly access is very important.
Not sure that's fire code.
Oh, okay.
Is that really fire code? Or is it just a fire international code?
It is the international fire code, which I understand we have adopted.
But we have already violated it.
That's... We have to live with the problem for a little while. I mean, we don't have the money to...
Right, but I'm saying you violated... Throw this project out. You already had violated it when you came up the street. You've got to have more than 30 houses going up that road.
Oh, we got about 45.
Yeah, I would say at least, when you consider cul-de-sacs.
Yeah. And I've discussed this with the fire marshal, and his point is we don't want to forget about this, and we...
No, no, I know what Pete's saying. I know what you're saying. But I'm just saying we're already...
Yeah, and I understand, Brent, when you say we have to live with it for a little while, but just as long as it's not too long, I guess, or... I mean, we either have a code or we don't have a code. I don't know.
Well, the problem is this whole thing is in violation. As soon as they build on the west side down below Hole 13, it's going to be in violation. There's no question about it. Right? No, go back. 13, over here to the very, very left, my left, NC 5. When you build all that out, that definitely will be in violation.
The dial development?
Yeah.
No, go one more street over. NC 5, right there.
Castle's Gate?
Yeah, that would definitely be in violation.
We've been... Yes, we're working to find a solution to that. It's been pointed out to us.
Okay. My point is the whole...
Open up a second access down here through Whispering Creek. And the great... The extreme grade changes would not allow that connection. So that was looked at.
Just one last question. There was a comment that said the legal description was inadequate. I just wondered if it'd been changed.
It had been revised. It has been revised.
It has been revised. Okay. Thank you.
So when do we... When do we correct our problem? Two years, three years? And what's the real...
I think the resolution comes upon the demand for the development to the north up to Highway 20. And that's going to be development-driven with this property owner here that owns a property on both the east and the west side of Glen Allen. As Brent mentioned, we already have the dry utilities going through there. And so most of the grading has already been completed. It's a matter of working with Iowa DOT on making that future connection. Obviously, we would want to partner with the developer when that project comes forward.
Who paid for the utilities and the...
The city did.
Grading so far?
The city has.
It was part of the water and sewer line that came down from the new water tower up on Buchanan down to make a loop.
Make a loop.
To Spring Creek.
Difficult to rationalize that, isn't it? But the developer will pay for that. Pay for... That's what you're waiting for.
The developer, when that northerly property, I keep calling it the cornerstone property. It was theirs for a while. I'm not sure it owns it right now. Yes, they will pay for the... They will plat the ground and pay for the concrete for Glen Allen as well as any cul-de-sacs that come off of it. What we do... What we must make sure doesn't happen is they decide to only go 500 feet north and stop. That just makes the problem worse. The next development needs to go all the way to Highway 20.
And that's the tricky thing, is we keep allowing these developments without forcing a developer or forcing them all to come to the table and say, well, no, you need to make this connection before we allow future development.
Yeah, I think that is difficult, and we dealt with that to the south when we made the connection to Old Highway 141. We can condemn for a public street. In this case, if it becomes a problem and if there's a traffic issue or a safety issue, we always have that option to be able to condemn property for a public street. Again, that would be solely at our expense, though. And that's why we're stating that our anticipation...
What's that? Just holding out that hope?
Holding out on the development prospects for that property.
It's more than just a faint hope, however.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
One last question. Streetlights. It says, "Streetlights shall be installed prior to consideration of the final plat with approval of the final plat and approval of a subdivision improvement installation agreement. If necessary, streetlights shall be dedicated to the city, and the city shall become responsible for maintenance." What's "if necessary" mean?
First of all, that is part of the subdivision ordinance. It's being worked on, and you will be seeing it within the next couple of months. We've revised the entire streetlight requirement to require LEDs. The problem we have with streetlights is the poles, for whatever reason I don't know, take forever to get ordered. There's a very long lag time. Ideally, we would have the streetlights in before the final plat was approved, so they'd be dedicated. We have in the past been using subdivision improvement installation agreements to make sure that they get put in later, whenever the poles arrive. That's the "if necessary" part. If we can't find a way, and it's kind of out of all our hands, they come... They don't make them around here. If they... If we can't get them in, it will be necessary to use subdivision improvement installation agreements for them to ensure that they're put in when the poles get here. I've been working with Nystrom Electric. Neither one of us has a clue as to why it takes so long to fabricate those, but it's a multi-month process.
Thanks, Brent.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
No.
You just need to vote. Anyone to be heard on this?
John Solzback, 5000 South Louis Boulevard. Here just answering questions. The roundabout deal is something that we have for aesthetics to make the subdivision very nice. And it does us no good to have it on Glen Allen. In fact, it's not even possible to build it down there because we don't own the land on the other side. And so it's not even really plausible.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
No. How soon are you going to start?
As soon as possible. We've actually already started dirtwork.
Oh, okay. All right, everybody vote? Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Passes 50. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
I don't.
No.
Did you want to talk about that one? You do have someone here who wishes to talk about 11.
Okay.
Well, I'm not quite...
Need to...
I'm not quite sure what 11 is, but my name is Sherry Allen-Moan. I've lived here since November of last year. I own Studio 107.
What's that?
I own Studio 107 at...
Need your address, please.
Oh, 613 107... 613 11th Street, apartment 107, Sioux City, Iowa.
Okay. 11 is on a Glen Allen Road development. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm just saying I want to volunteer. What can I do to help?
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh. No, we're good to go.
Okay, good.
It's going to go. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything I can do, just give me a call. I'm on Facebook.
All right. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Reckon?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Cabrin?
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Passes 50. 12 is a motion approving a preliminary plat of C A B Estates subdivision west of Glen Allen Road. Petitioners, C A B Estates LLC, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
This was another part... This was the other item concerning this Whispering Creek development. We... The record of both items is the same. And we were... We voted unanimously on this item as well as on the prior Whispering Creek item.
Passes 50. 13 is a hearing in ordinance vacating the southeast, northwest alley of 325 West Clifton. Petitioners, Marlon Nelson, P&amp;Z recommends denial of this item. I'll move it.
Second.
This was a proposed vacation of an alleyway. The petitioner did not attend the meeting, but a... One of the abutting landowners came and talked about how he uses this property once in a while to do things in the back part of his yard. And so for that reason, I believe we determined that it was part of the transportation system, and we denied the request unanimously.
Anyone to be heard on this item? You will vote no if you want to uphold the decision of the P&amp;Z. It fails 50. 14 is a hearing in ordinance amending chapters entitled 25 of the Sioux City Municipal Code entitled zoning and sign code. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
We did have one item that we polled that there'll be more... That there'll be more discussion about. But with these, I think that commission considered these all minor ministeria... Changes of a ministeria or minor nature, and we approved them unanimously.
How often do we go through those?
Well, when you spend $275,000 for a zoning deal, it's supposed to all be handled.
I would say several times a year, some kind of zoning, some kind of change like this comes up. Frequently, it is in Chris or Jeff. Frequently, basically, we are faced with an actual problem in interpreting or using the ordinance, and we realize it needs to be tweaked.
Chris Madison, Senior Planner. We've probably made five, six rounds of changes in the past two...
two years, looking at a collection of different items that we see as we're implementing the code.
Okay. I just think sometimes the updating is good, and we need to do more of that, so I want to make sure.
Well, let me just say, we did have it in the planning and zoning update, and within a month, we were redoing it before. Am I wrong, Mr. Hanson? Stop me if I am, but I think I am correct, and so now we continue to tweak signs. It would seem like pretty soon we should know.
For example, murals.
I don't care if they're minor or not. We should have known it when we spent that money.
Mural language was added. We had not really faced the issue of murals until there were proposals to build murals. I mean, that's the way I look at it, Mr. Mayor. I don't know.
I'm saying for 275, we should have anticipated murals. That guy should have known. He works in big cities, and everyone I go to have murals, he should have known that we were going to have murals, but I don't want to argue about it today.
Two of the examples, one is the mural, and there was language in the.
How did we get the murals without the, did, are they legal, or did they need this?
Yeah, zoning and sign code required the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approval of the murals. And so the commission did approve the two most recent murals. Going through that process, we found that it wasn't the most efficient process to have a planning and zoning commission reviewing artwork, because we consider the murals to be artwork. They're not signage, they're not advertising any products. And so as part of this rounded text amendments, we took out the review from the Planning and Zoning Commission on murals, because we're forecasting additional murals to come forward. Another one is projecting signs. We're promoting the use of projecting signs, not just in downtown and our historic districts, but also projecting signs in all commercial districts that would allow a projecting sign that would come off the face of the building. The code did allow those. They were rather minor, they were only six square feet. Working with property owners and downtown property owners, we found that 20, we did our own research and found out that 24 square feet is more realistic as far as advertising sign for projecting, and so in this case, we upped our square footage to 24.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
That's our story, and we're sticking to it. Let's vote.
Thanks.
But I do disagree with him. I think the P&amp;Z, the commission does like artwork, and we think we are good judges of it, so.
You're saying P&amp;Z doesn't like the murals?
Love artwork.
They love artwork?
We love artwork. I mean, I know it's not within the scope of a.
Staff doesn't?
I know it's not within the scope of a planning and zoning obligation, but we, I think.
Appreciate it.
We all appreciate artwork.
Don't we, Bob?
Not going there today.
Bob loves it.
Just keep moving forward here today.
He's our leader.
Who hasn't voted?
Rhonda and Alex.
Are we voting yes or no?
I did. Sorry, I thought I did.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Kabal kabal.
Passes five zero. I don't want to stand in the way of artwork downtown, that's for sure. Anybody opposed to waiving the rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second. Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Second, third.
Second.
Passes five zero. 15 is a resolution approving the final plat for Blue Stem Edition, a minor subdivision in Plymouth County, Iowa. Petitioners Ryan Ross, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading. Oh, I'll move it. There's no.
This item was approved unanimously by the commission without too many questions or comments. It's one of those extraterritorial, within two mile subdivisions.
One of the last things in that RCA said that the applicant would be required to sign an annexation agreement, and it will need to be sent to him and need to be signed prior to the city council approval. Is that done?
Chris Madison, Senior Planner, we have received that agreement.
You have, you say? Thank you.
Passes five zero. 16 is a hearing and ordinance vacating alleys adjacent to 200 and 222 Floyd Boulevard. Petitioner City of Sioux City. I'll move first reading.
Second.
This was approved unanimously by the commission with a few questions. It doesn't look like this is of use to the transportation system, and there's no other party that seems to be interested in this property.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Second, third. I'll move it.
Second.
You guys earned your money this time, huh?
We always earn our money.
Good girl. That's what we want to hear.
Okay. Five to zero. Resolution 17, approving the final plat for Sunny Brook Village, a replat of portions of Lot 1 in Sunny Brook Village and out Lot 3 of Sunny Brook Plaza. Petitioners AP, Sioux City LLC, P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item. Move it.
Second.
This was a replat, and there, it was approved unanimously by the commission. There are a couple of questions about it, but nothing, no one, nothing of note.
I need to abstain on this item. Conflict of interest.
Passes four zero to one. Mr. Moore abstains. 18 is a hearing and motion to obtain public comments regarding the Western Hills.
Thanks, Susan.
To Indian Hills. Tank and tank demolition projects state revolving fund environmental review. I'll move it.
Second.
Afternoon. Ethan Joy of J. O. Consulting Group. This is a simple environmental review hearing for the environmental review is done by SRF for this water project. No significant impacts were found, so any questions, I will take them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Passes five zero. 19 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for the Singing Hills Ground Storage Reservoir Exterior Painting Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. 20 is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of downtown Sioux City Hotel Associates for the purchase of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area and authorizing the sale of property at 400 Virginia Street. I'll move it.
I'll second.
No. 21 is a hearing and ordinance amending ordinance 2017-017 relating to the vacation of a portion of Outer Drive adjacent to 4100 Outer Drive. I'll move it.
Second.
What was this one for?
Just a change in language, right?
Scrivener's error. Correcting something, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it was just a language.
In the legal description, I believe it was an east and west were switched for each other, and the recorder is asked that we finally change it.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the rule, statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second. Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I'll move second, third. Passes five zero. 22 is a resolution authorizing city manager to sign a funding agreement between the city and Aberdeen Apartments LLC to provide home funds for the rehabilitation of Aberdeen Apartments 1120 Nebraska Street deferred from November 20th. Motion requested defer till December 4, 2017, and I'll move that.
Second.
Still working. Jill Wanderside, Neighborhood Services Manager, still working on some of the language within the promissory notes, so just requesting some additional time.
Thanks, Jill.
Passes four zero to one. Mr. Moore abstains. 23 is a resolution approving lease between the city of Sioux City School, Indy School District and the city of Sioux City for use of 607 Forest Street to house a Sioux City Public Museum. I would like to, well, I got to move it first and then amend, so I'll move it.
Second.
I'd like to move to amend the part of the maintenance of the elevator, I think a more equitable arrangement instead of 5545 would be 80, 8020, school district taking up 80% of those costs and the city taking up 20%.
Second.
On the amendment.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
No.
Moore?
Abstain.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Now on the amendment.
That was the amendment, was it?
Yeah, that was.
Now on the amended motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, you may use your voting panels.
Yeah.
That passed?
That passed. Three to one, or three, one to zero.
Okay.
That passes four to zero to one. Mr. Moore abstains. 24 is a resolution approving a settlement and mutual release agreement between the city, Civic Partners, Stephen Rose Simmixon.
Why don't you vote no for that last one?
I'll move it, much to my chagrin.
Not for the overall.
Okay.
Agreed.
Mayor and Council, outside Council Jeff Wright is here to answer any additional questions that the council may have regarding the settlement. The basic terms were outlined in the RCA provided to the council, but we would be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
I would like to ask you this. It might be an unfair question, but we're, because I didn't have time to compare, but was the Sioux City Journal article accurate as far as what the settlement proposal was? It seemed accurate to me, but did you see anything?
The Journal's article, my review of the article is accurate. I think I gathered from the article, it came primarily from the RCA and is consistent with the terms that were agreed upon with Civic Partners, tentatively subject to the council's approval, and is consistent with what has, the direction we've had from city staff in negotiating with Civic Partners to get to this point.
And our vote today will be subject to bankruptcy approval?
That, that's correct. If the bankruptcy, we anticipate it from some guidance we've received from the court, that the bankruptcy, court is likely to approve it as a, with a submission coming next week. We will be back before you, next week, anticipated to be back before you next week with an amendment to the minimum assessment agreement that exists for the property. And then the anticipation in my communication with council for Civic Partners is it will be prepared to submit something to the court as early as Tuesday or Wednesday of next week.
Not that I don't trust Civic Partners. But what if they now, all of a sudden, decide, well, down the road, you know, that million, we just don't feel like paying it.
We would have a cause of action against them for breach of the settlement agreement you would, you're being asked to approve today.
Which means we could drag it out in court.
Which means we're right back where we are now, just in a different courtroom. And so, which, in, in their defense, that's true of any piece of litigation that gets resolved. You sign a contract and, and everybody's stuck with it, but I appreciate the mayor's concern.
Well, you've taken a, I mean, this is a very difficult situation for the city, and it's been going on for a long time. I appreciated the historical information on the city apartments development that was laid out, and you've done a great job on behalf of the city to get, I think this is as good as we're going to get. You always run the risk, you always second guess yourself, thinking, well, maybe we could do better, but maybe we could, you know, end up doing worse. And it, I mean, for me and for the city, I think it's time to move on and, and do what we know is the right thing to do. Get the development going and, and seeing good things happening at that location. So I want to thank you for your legal services that you've rendered to get us to this point. It wasn't easy. And like I said, it's been going on for a number of years, and it's, I think it's just time to, to move on.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words, and I wouldn't be before you recommending it if I didn't think this is where, as good as we're going to do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No doubt.
Well, I will say, these are kinds of deals you plug your nose and vote for them even though they stink, so. I'm just glad I had the opportunity to spend a half hour with the principal of the company so we could have a real understanding of what we think of each other, so that was worth every minute I spent. Citizen concerns. Anyone wish to be heard?
Take the vote on that one.
I'm sorry, it's five zero.
Thank you.
Come forward, state your name and address if you want to be heard.
Leon Husk, 3400 Alberta Avenue. And they closed my street today. It's not really my street, it's a street out at 7th and Cedar and 14th and Lakeport, out by the old landfill. My understanding is that there's been trash dumped out there, so they decided to close it instead of trying to do something about the people dumping trash. South Sioux had problems along Foundry Road out there, and they put cameras up. And it was, what, three years ago, they caught some guy dumping deer carcasses out there. They had pictures of him with a Ford pickup. They caught him. They fined him. Why can't Sioux City do something like that instead of closing these roads?
I don't know, but Leon, we had a public hearing on it. Were you not notified?
No, I was not.
Are you within the 300 feet?
No. I use it all the time, because I've got my horse out on Buchanan, found out about it tonight, was I come back from dropping feed off, and it's blocked off. People use that, they ride horseback on that. They can't get around the gates to ride horseback. It's a way out. I know when they resurfaced Parkview Boulevard, that was our way in and out, because the community development or engineering, whoever.
I don't know, but we vacated, we didn't actually vacate.
Did something with it.
It's a temporary closure.
Temporary closure. We put a temporary closure on it four weeks ago.
That was last week, wasn't it?
Well, it wasn't last week.
Last week.
Yeah, it's just the last week or two. I think so.
Boy, you got, you got the gates on quick.
But it's a through street. I mean, it's, it's been there for years. Granted, there's trash been dumped out there, but like I said, you've got power right out there at 14th and Lakeport for your siren. Put a camera up there.
I'm, I just tell you this, that the majority of the people live on the street, that.
There is nobody that lives along that part of the street.
People that have to put up the garbage and the dumping and the four-wheeling and all that are the ones that petitioned to have it closed, and there was one concerned citizen that didn't want it, and when it all got done, they all wanted it closed, so I don't know that you're going to.
So do I get a petition up to have it open, then?
I don't know the process now.
You could certainly take out a petition. There isn't a set number of signatures or anything like that. It's just more of a call for the council. anything like that, it's just more of a call for the council to take a look at the issue if they choose to re-vote on it, but unless the council directs staff to put it back on the agenda.
Well, you know, that's not gonna make much sense, because we need to come up with a compromise, because we've got one, you know, got one bunch that wants it closing and got somebody else that wants it open, so.
I use, I've used it just about every night for the last five, six years since my cousin moved out there.
So have you noticed all the?
Yes, I have, I've called it in. A couple times I've followed pickup load of junk or trash, whatever, I followed them, I stayed right behind them, they slow way down, I followed them, I stayed right behind them, they've gone and dumped it somewhere else.
I don't know if it'd be a solution, but that one owner, didn't we say we would give a key to that gate? I mean, obviously you don't want to give out keys to everyone, but if he's utilizing this for?
Well, I've got a master key, a big red handle.
For his, yeah, for his horses, I mean, if we could possibly do that.
So who, who was the owner?
Well, it was, remember it was that north stretch of road and they were dumping couches, and he said that they were.
Yeah, I know, I know the location.
But I forget the gentleman that.
I was just wondering if.
Didn't own the ground.
If he did not.
It's Alex Cott's old farm.
Joe Cott's old place. I think it's Spanish people live in there.
It was, they were farming each side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he farms each side of the road.
I've seen areas where they keep vehicles out, but you still have kind of a pathway to get through, would something like that work with, for those who are on horses?
But he's still drives. But I'm talking, I, I drive out there, I don't ride my horse out there, I drive out there, get to my horse.
Oh, to get to your horse?
Yeah, he's just not.
And I mean, if you're gonna close streets like this, you better go down and close Bluff Street, because if you go across Bluff Road, that bridge over Bluff Road, there's four or five couches laying there right now.
Jeff, were you gonna say something?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. To clarify, this was a petition that was brought forward by an adjacent property owner. We sent out two notices to all the adjacent and non-abutting property owners. As the mayor mentioned, all but one were in support of closing the road. As far as the, the gates that have been installed and access to that, as part of the closure, there will be no city maintenance on the road, so I wouldn't advise of handing out keys for additional access. The key is only to be used for utility company, fire, police response if needed, and then also the farm manager that farms on both sides of the road that have been closed. No other property owners have access because they do not have abutting property on that section of roadway that's been closed. So not only is it closed, but as far as the maintenance, snow removal and maintenance of that road will cease as of today with the road closed.
Yeah, did they do a traffic count on that road?
Yeah, there was DOT traffic count done, I don't have it right in front of me, I wasn't prepared for it tonight, but it was, I think, twenty-four, twenty-five cars on a daily basis that used it.
No, there's more than that, I'll guarantee you that, and I never did see a, a traffic counter out there that I've gone through for the last five years.
The DOT has done two counts over the last four years out there, and we compared them and it, it went up by just a handful.
Because like I say, I use it twice a day anyhow myself, going and coming.
The one that you go in.
There's other.
I gotta go down to Eighteenth Seventy-Five and down to Sixth Street, now it's Sixth Street, now I'm going to drive and get there. So it's about five, six miles out of my way now.
But won't we, won't we still run into the same concerns if we reconsidered, reconsidered it, that the same property owners would come and object?
The property owners complaining about the trash being dumped? Put cameras up, put one up at Fourteenth and Lakeport?
Leon, that's not gonna work, that, that's not a solution, we put them up, even when you put them up, the police have a hard time doing anything about it.
Yeah.
They caught people dumping over at Bargain Center and they don't do anything about it other than go tell them, don't dump anymore, well.
Right.
Well, I don't know about that, the hardest part is. Well, I do know, I, I asked the question of your chief.
The hardest part is identification off of it.
They had, they had them on a camera.
Well, if you can identify somebody, but if you get just the license plate number, that in and of itself won't get you anywhere.
That's the problem.
Other than to talk to people that hopefully you might cause them to think twice about it again, but there, there wouldn't be any, anything to do unless you can actually testify that that's the individual committing the crime. And cameras are pretty, their technology is a lot better now than it ever used to be, so maybe they'd be able to pick somebody out and somebody would.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
Could identify them, I don't know.
But like I said, as far as I'm concerned, I wasn't notified of it, there should have been a sign posted out there or something, there's gonna be something closed.
Leon, you know the rules, you know the rules, the rules are, so many feet within is how you have to notify. We can't, I may use the road, but they're not gonna call me and say, Bob, do you want to close the road?
No, but if you're using the road, maybe a public notice post.
That's the problem, they don't know you're using it, so they only notify the people that are around them, is what I'm saying, that, that's the way it works, whether it's right or wrong, we're not, you can't set up there and do traffic studies to see who's using it so you can notify them, we just.
No, but what I'm saying is a poster up there or something, just put a state, a sign up that, that's gonna be, there's gonna be a hearing on such and such a date, so we could have been here, the twenty-four is supposedly that use it each day.
I, I don't know, I'm, there's a time for a hearing, I guess if you want to get a petition, you can get a petition, I don't know where the rest of you are, but I'll look at it at that time's where I'm at.
How many would we need on the petition?
There's no, I think the city attorney said there's no certain, uh, set number.
So how many petition before, was there seven property owners, is that what it was, or?
There's twelve adjacent property owners that are along the stretch, just north into the south of the road closure, and eleven signed the petition in support to close the road.
Tell me again, you have to go all the way to Eighteenth Street to get back down to where your horses are?
I live on Alberta, it's two blocks north of Eighteenth, or of Parkview.
Yep.
Okay, I go down Martha and out Martha to Fourteenth, Fourteenth across to Lakeport and out that way. Now I've gotta go down.
On reverse.
I've gotta go down the hill, down to Parkview, Parkview to Eighteenth, Eighteenth Seventy-Five and down to Sixth Street, that's Sixth Street on out.
Cut back out.
I mean, if you get a petition with a, a good number of people that are saying, oh no, we need this, we need this road, that's one thing, but it's, again, these property owners that are dealing with it every day, I understand you're using it as a thoroughfare or driving through, but, you know what I mean? So if you get a, a large contingency of people saying, no, we use this, we need this road, we need this road, I mean, that's something I think the council will hear.
Only twenty-eight people a day using it.
Kind of my point.
I mean, just to be realistic, you're not gonna get that, so.
I just met three, two other vehicles turn around and come back as I turned around at it right, just before I came down here. So there's three of us right there that got caught on it, swung off there.
Other than you, were probably loaded with garbage, but.
No, none of them were. One was a seventy county Nebraska plate, I think he's one of them that keeps horses up there at Cott's old place, and then one other one turned off there where Bakers used to live, to turn around when he saw me turning around.
I don't know what to tell you, I, I guess you can get petitions, but.
Okay, now, as long as we're on street closures.
Tough sell for me, so.
Do I still have three minutes or not?
You gotta go back and come back up, no.
Okay. A year ago, two weeks from tomorrow, I started a different job with the city, Eighteenth Street to Seventy-Five, since, in the last year, since, well, almost a year since I've started, seventy-three times Eighteenth and Seventy-Five has been blocked by a train. I've had to go down, of the seventy-three times, there was eight times I didn't get across Eleventh Street. Those, there was, seven of those times I got across at Sixth Street, one time I had to go Gordon Drive, get around the train. Of the times that I got down Eleventh Street, there were seven weeks that there was construction between Cargill and the railroad tracks at Clark, at Eleventh and Clark, that I couldn't go across, but there's only been two other times that I couldn't get across there because of the trains. Don't close Eleventh Street when you do that new bridge at Eighteenth, that's a through street, it goes from east of Seventy-Five clear over Douglas Street. It doesn't make sense to close that street off when you put the new Eighteenth Street viaduct on, especially when you're closing seventy-three times at Eighteenth and Seventy-Five. You're still gonna have traffic, and that's one that should be addressed more so than the viaduct, because you've got semis backing up on the southbound lane waiting to turn right at Eighteenth Street, and you get traffic backed up there. So, don't close Eleventh Street if you're gonna close any, I mean, I could see Twenty-Eighth Street before that, but that shouldn't even be closed. I mean, Eighteenth Street's gonna be a T-intersection at Floyd Boulevard, you're gonna have to go north or south, and you're just, you just changed, the state just changed the interchange down here at Gordon Drive and Nebraska, because they didn't like the jog in there. It's gonna be the same thing, you're gonna have a jog to get anywhere with that Eighteenth Street Bridge, Eighteenth Street Viaduct. So please don't close Eleventh Street, I mean, you're closing streets all around me, don't close that one. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Chris Boganree, two oh six West Twenty-Fourth, um, I'm, you guys are so efficient, I didn't think you'd get to number twenty-three before five o'clock. That's the lease between the school, is it possible to bring that back up to, to discuss? Can, can I ask some questions on that one?
You can ask a question, but we're not necessarily gonna bring it back up, just, I mean, you can ask a question.
Okay. Mr. Padmore was telling me that there's, there was an amendment to the lease to make the eighty, eighty-twenty split on the elevators, was that all the elevators, some of the elevators?
All the elevators.
So, so the freight elevator that the museum uses to get to their archives, you're talking about that one too?
Not gonna use two and three times a day like the school district is.
Okay.
The school district's gonna take their lunches up there and down every day, that's, that's at least twice they're gonna be using them, they don't go up, from what I understand from talking to Steve Hanson, three times a week would be a big week for them going up.
Okay. So you're, so you're talking about the freight and the two passengers? I think that's all of them. Okay, and does the, is the museum accessible via Skywalk right now?
What's that?
Is the museum accessible from the Skywalk?
No.
It's not? Okay, and they, they never intend to be?
I don't believe so.
No, because they have steps that go up that back way and they don't, they have not hooked them back up.
And that's not a.
Boyded steps that they don't use.
Businesses aren't required that, to be hooked into the Skywalk? You can, you can shut off access as long as you pay for it.
Well, they shut it off when they build it, so nobody said anything at that point in time.
Okay, because I, I was just curious if the Skywalk would ever be used to access the museum and then those passenger elevators.
Only the twenty percent of the time that they're gonna use that elevator down the front.
Gotcha. Okay, I wanted to make sure I understand, because it does go to, this lease was gonna go to a vote tonight at the school board meeting at six, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what, what you're requesting.
You might, you might, might look at the total usage by both, and maybe you can't tell right now, but eventually we'll have a record of how much each entity is using the elevators.
Is it some way to track it?
Well, if their argument would be, no, we need to do the, we need to cover the fifty-five, I mean, then I guess that would be the next step, you would have to look at it, I think the argument is just.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, sorry. Forty-five percent of that just didn't make as much sense when we're barely utilizing and they'll use it much more frequently in case there is a breakdown, I mean.
Okay, I, I understand what, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? All right. Pete?
No, I, I don't.
Gosh, you're going quick.
No, we got the list, here we go.
Exactly right.
That's why I said no.
Um, so, no, we had a, had a great time, I just want to congratulate and thank, she left Reagan Downtown Partners, everyone that was associated with Holiday Parade down there, I thought it was a great, great turnout, the weather cooperated, and was just happy to be a part of it, it was a good time, Dan loves parades, come on, it was a good time, wasn't it? And then, um, small business.
Ran over you, but.
Yeah.
We, we did, we almost backed into you.
Yeah, exactly, I was worried a couple times, that's why I drive myself. So then, um, Small Business Saturday, Small Business Saturday was a really good time as well, I think the bingo went on over well, thanks to the journal and the news stations that covered that, I think that, um, I, I actually talked to a few people downtown that were saying that they really enjoyed it, and, and I, I hope, and I've talked about this numerous times, about how we can expand small businesses downtown, I'm, I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation, because I think that's the type of atmosphere that we want down there, um, so just anyway, it was great, thanks for all of those who were able to come out. Then I wanted to say, tonight kicks off the NAIA, tonight's the banquet of champions, and then this week is the NAIA volleyball down at the Tyson, please make sure to go support your teams. I know Morningside is gonna be playing tomorrow, and tomorrow's gonna be playing tomorrow and Thursday, mayor, when is, is Briar Cliff?
Briar Cliff plan.
Mayor, did you?
I didn't have that down, Pete, did you?
Where is that?
I went to this Morningside game Saturday and I paid my eight dollars.
There you go.
I support both teams unlike some council members that sit here, see?
Apparently that's the case, yes.
Surely you're not talking about me, I get up to Briar Cliff quite a bit, I get up to Briar Cliff quite a bit.
Some of us have even worn the uniform at Briar Cliff.
That's right, a long time ago.
Some of us are supposed to be up there interviewing a presidential candidate right now. Are you supposed to be too?
Yeah, I was invited, yes, but I told them we couldn't do it.
All right, and then, um, the, what is it, South St. Mary Ravine Channel Improvement, there's a public meeting that's gonna be held tomorrow, that's at the church, what's, which church is that again?
Redeemer Lutheran on South Lakeport.
Thank you.
Twenty-eight hundred block.
So if you'd like to be heard about that project, please make sure to go there. Then let's see, what else, there's a few more, uh, oh, uh, this Friday, there's actually a, no, I lied, Thursday, Thursday, seven o'clock is the Riverfront Development, public input, council chambers. So please, if you, Riverfront Development, public input, imagine that, asking the public for their input on a project, um, a lot of people have a lot of strong feelings about that project, I think it's a very exciting one, so hopefully we'll see a lot of people gain a lot of input and, and ultimately have the best riverfront that we can have, I'm excited, I'll be there.
Artie, can I ask you a question after, after the meeting, I just didn't want you to run out on me, thanks, this, this reminded me of it.
And then the last thing that I would mention is this Saturday, is the, they're gonna be showing at the Sioux City Public Museum, An Inconvenient Truth, the sequel, uh, they're gonna be doing a screening of that, and so it's gonna be from one PM to three thirty PM. I would urge anyone interested in conversation as well as the screening of that film to come on down to the public museum on Saturday, I know a few members of council will be there as well, so, that's all I got.
And I may be late for that, because it's my grandma's Christmas party, so I hope you guys can get there and I'll come late.
Take notes for you. One to three P, three thirty PM.
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
I'll be out of town.
I'm working.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there. Well, thank you, you're, you know, you're really a good social chairperson of the council.
Try to be, try to make sure you guys.
Couple things, I just want to thank the men and women of the city of Sioux City that worked on Thanksgiving Day, including our utilities people, with some of the water main breaks we had, um, and of course our police and fire always protect us, they never take a day off, uh, but I just want to let the utilities people and police and fire know how much we appreciate what they do, and if any of you worked on Thanksgiving Day, thank you for your service to the citizens. Sometimes you just can't take a day off, and I tried to take a day off, and that's when I was learning about some of the water main breaks we were having, so I'm glad when that someday will.
Add one on Jackson Street.
Yeah, Thirtieth.
That'd be closed for a while.
Thirtieth and Jackson, yeah, one on Thanksgiving morning was over in Riverside. So I just wanted to, to thank those folks, and I think that's all I have, mayor.
I don't want to know today, Donna, but could you give me a memo on where that million, five hundred thousand for the school money's gonna go, I want to kind of let, just kind of know where that's going, Bob, uh, I've heard different things, I'd like to know.
I'm gonna second that one, me too.
And I have to be in Kansas City early Friday morning, so I'm leaving Thursday night, so I'll trust that all of you.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron? Aye.
Um, can I-
Do you recycle these back there, and then throw this in my backpack, please?